Between obtaining, purchasing, small, living, evergreen trees, treating them kindly and properly, and donating them to the township for planting into urban forests. It allows your citizens a chance of participation that's really badly needed, given the concern that seems to be out there. I know it doesn't make a drop in the bucket. I mean, we go through Langley and we have these beautiful trees. We have huge, beautiful trees. We also have to be doing something to sustain that into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are a couple of questions from members of council here. Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you very much for coming tonight. I really appreciate your sentiment and also the practicality of what you're suggesting. I think it's important. We're doing a lot of, as you mentioned, good work towards climate action. And one of the things we're talking about is our tree canopy. So I can see an initiative like this, maybe, you know, in the past, it hasn't quite materialized in the way that one would like, but I think we're closer to being able to look at different community opportunities. So when I saw that you were presenting, I just did a little bit of research and I noticed, for example, California in San Francisco has a project. So a nonprofit there got together and they bought six-to-nine-foot trees. And then people bought the trees. And then at the end of the Christmas season, you could bring it back and they would take it and then they would find an appropriate place, along with the local government, to plant them. And you also referenced Tree Canada, which is also another good initiative, and they have grant funding coming up for money for that. So I think it's, you've got all the right players that you've mentioned, and so I think we just need some political will and perhaps the idea that if we look at that, we already pre-select sites for having trees that don't quite fit on development sites. And so I don't think it's unreasonable to consider what other trees from the public might be donated for that purpose. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I know that right now you're planting two to three hundred trees into this, but New Westminster has made a commitment to plant 11,800 trees over the last, over the next ten years. And I'd like to see the township of Langley meet that.
Thank you. And Council Richter.
Yes, I was just wondering, you said that you were looking for township land to plant these live Christmas trees on. Do you have an idea of where this land should be or is located?
I'm sure you've, it depends also what type of trees, okay? Because if you're looking at native species, then they would be appropriate for putting into some of our natural forests, such as the Campbell Valley Park area, such as some of the urban forests. If you're looking at some non-native species, such as the redwood, which I'd love to see a few big redwoods being planted to grow here later on, they may choose a park setting rather than a natural forest. And, yeah, we've got the places all over Langley. They're, they go everywhere in many of our park spaces. And I'm thinking of, as you go, I live in Fort Langley, you can go around Billy Brown Crescent. You can see there, we have that five-acre field that there was some reforestation tried. Some of those trees died, okay? It certainly has a lot of room for a lot more trees into that area to become forested. There's the ground, as you come down, Glover, you pass where Trinity Western is, and we have the flat township-owned land right below that, that is prime land, that needs the water retained, you know, the soil retained, the water retained. It's right next to the Salmon River. You know, there is so many opportunities in this township for that type of planting.
Good. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. All right, so I'll move on to bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is rezoning application number 100549. Development permit application 101039. And bylaw 5519 and 5520 is Focus Architecture, Inc. Inc. Could I have a motion, please? Council Ferguson, secondor, have a second. Council Whitmarsh, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F1. It carries with Council Richter opposed. Move to F2. This is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100177. Development permit application number 101023. This is bylaw 5528, 5529, 5530, 5531, Carvelth, 88th Avenue LP. Could I have a motion, please? Council Long, secondor, please. Council Kuntz, discussion, seeing, oh, Council Arneson.
Seeing some. Thank you, worship. I just want to comment on this application in particular because I wanted to applaud staff working with the proponent for all of the, if you'll note, when you look in any more detail about the variances being sought, I think that a really good bargain was struck in terms of the type of amenities that are being proposed here. So I just wanted to name some of them. Twenty-year housing agreement for rental stock in the township. Fifteen percent of the units are adaptable. It also has a green roof component, centralized rainwater collection, 12,000 feet, I sound like an advertisement, 12,000 feet, of interior amenity space and EV infrastructure. So I think these are all really great things, not to mention the fact that it's in a transit-friendly village context. And so, like I said, I think it's really great that we have the opportunity to negotiate these kind of amendments and to make something that is a viable opportunity for people to live close to transit and also have services, because it's also mixed use.
Thank you. Council Richter.
Yes, I too am pleased to see rental units coming in. Certainly, that's a form of affordable housing that younger people in our community have a need for. So I will be supporting this application to go through to public hearing. I did have a question about number seven on page five, where it says, "Written authorization of the owner of 2012086th Avenue to remove trees on and near the common property line." I'm just wondering, through you to staff, Mr. Mayor, why this condition would be required?
Sure. Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, it's because of the location of the trees in relation with the services that are needed, and because of the proximity or the location of the trees, the consent of the neighbor is needed because it's straddling the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll call a question on F2. It carries unanimously. And we'll move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. G1 is Fraser Valley intermunicipal business license program. Could I have a motion, please? Council Davis, a secondor. Council Whitmarsh, discussion. Council Richter.
Yes, I just had a question through you to staff. Will there be opportunities for public input on this particular bylaw?
I, I'll ask Mr. Seffy, but I don't believe so, because we're doing first, second, and third reading. It'll go to fourth reading. I don't believe this type of bylaw requires public hearing, but Mr. Backen, could you elaborate?
It does not, your worship, and the challenge on this one is, we have an existing bylaw. This is simply adding two other communities to that bylaw, which is going to be Harrison Hot Springs and the City of Merritt.
Housekeeping, is that what it is?
Well, it's more than housekeeping. It's adding two new participants, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. Through you, maybe to Mr. Backen. I can't actively recall, but I'm wondering if there's any geographical constraints. It says that Merritt is going to be joining in, and I just looked, it's about 145 miles away. Is there, like, a catchment area of communities that we consider to be part of this program?
Not really, your worship. This is really trying to target those sorts of businesses that are doing over longer areas within Metro Vancouver, but also throughout. So, for example, trucking companies or other companies that have interest in both areas. This allows for them to have a unified business licensing program that makes it easier for business to be conducted.
Thank you. Okay, I see no further discussions. I'll call a question on G1. It carries unanimously. And move on to G2. Township of Langley, council procedure bylaw 2016, number 5199. Amendment bylaw 2019, number 5522. Bylaw 5522. Could I have a motion, please? Council Arneson, secondor, have a second. Council Kuntz, discussion on G2. Council Richter.
Yes, I just wanted to say I will be supporting this. I know it's only a portion of the bylaw that we're bringing forward for change now with the intent that more will be coming at a later date. And I just wanted to provide my thanks to staff for their extensive patience in working through this procedure bylaw with us, particularly the clerk, Ms. Bauer. Certainly, this procedure bylaw is very important for council in governing how we conduct our business. And we've had a lot of very good discussion over the past year, several times over the past year. So my appreciation to staff for all their efforts.
Great, thank you for that. Council Woodward.
I just wanted to, me and council can bring up the staff report and turn to page seven. That's item G2. Item K, Part IX, Section 908. To the intent there, it was the original CPC meeting, if we recall, was to reduce the speaking time per speaking opportunity from 10 minutes to five. So currently, right now, council members have 20 minutes per item for two speaking opportunities for 10 minutes per. And I suggested an amendment to reduce that to a total time of 15 minutes with three speaking opportunities, or some variant of that, where the mover of a notice of motion, for example, or another amendment, would have a third or potentially different opportunity to speak to that motion and not lose one of their opportunities to speak. So what ended up happening here, and I likely missed it when it first came to CPC, is only one half of that made that into the proposed procedure bylaw amendment. So right now, we're reducing the speaking time from 20 minutes down to 10, but not adding that additional third speaking opportunity, which was the intent, which was proposed as a package. So I'd like to make an amendment to pull this out for now and refer it back to CPC for further discussion before adopting it.
Okay, can you?
So it's in the reports, in G2, page seven.
Which page?
Amendment, I don't know, it's just in the online one here. The actual amendment, G2, page seven, item K.
Okay.
So it's amending 908, replacing two items with 10 minutes each down to five, without the third one, which is what the original proposal was. So you would drop from 20 minutes down to 15 minutes in total, but have a third opportunity for a mover of a motion. So I'm not suggesting we not do this. I would just like to pull this out for now and refer it back to CPC for further discussion, along with the other proposed amendments.
Is there a secondor to that amendment? Council Arneson seconds it. So, just to be clear, I don't recall that happening. I don't recall that being part of the discussion. Do you have notes on that? Because I thought we discussed it pretty thoroughly, so maybe you can help me.
I believe during the CPC meeting, we did discuss it. And that was the portion that was carried. The rest of the suggestion was not at that point.
Yeah, so.
In this case, we could delete Section K from the amending bylaw, if council wishes, and deal with it again at a different time.
Please, it would remain the way it is if we take it out. That's right. It would remain.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, speakers, did you wish?
I'll just add a bit more to the intent of that. So when we discussed this at CPC, of course, what's constantly brought up is that it has to go back to council for further discussion. So I think for now, I'm asking for that additional discussion before we adopt this amendment formally and reduce our speaking time from 20 minutes to 10 minutes. And what I would like to do is discuss that, have the opportunity to discuss that again at CPC, to talk about this issue where people move motions and they have to speak to the motion and explain it, then they only have one more opportunity to participate in the substantive discussion. And rather than just arbitrarily reduce our total speaking time, I would like to go back to CPC again with this one item and reconsider it again, rather than just adopt a reduction in speaking time. But thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Council Richter.
Yeah, as I recall, we had a fairly extensive discussion around this, and we ended up with not giving a third speaking opportunity to the mover of the motion, because that creates an unlevel playing field for the rest of council. So the rest of council will only get to speak twice, while the mover gets to speak three times. I would suggest pulling this out and referring it back is not appropriate. I think that we will continue to have discussions around this particular, around the rest of the bylaw, and certainly, the mover of this motion is quite able to bring up adding in a third opportunity for the mover again to speak at subsequent discussions. So I'm not supporting pulling this out. I think we should proceed. I think it would help streamline our business to take 10 minutes down to five minutes and help us get through the meetings in a little more timely manner.
Thank you. Council Davis.
Just to clarify, through the chair, to Mr., to Council Woodward, are you saying that the mover would get a third time? No. You're saying that we just reduce this to 10, we take the word 10, reduce it to five, and then we get three times to talk? Okay, sorry. Just tell me what exactly.
You're on the list, so you can just hold that question, and Council Woodward will answer you when he gets his turn to speak.
Okay, but I just, I would, I don't think, like, what's, what would be the timeframe to send this back? Have we ever had somebody go on for 20 minutes?
I don't.
Have you? No, but I, I mean, you can, as the mayor, you can kind of tune things in a bit, like, let's get to the point.
Yeah, I've never had a big issue with it. And sure, the odd times, one councilor might go on a little bit longer, but then the next time, there's nobody speaking and we move through the agenda. So there's some discretion if council wants a challenge on that, on a minute or two.
Okay, now, just my last one. It is nice to be able to speak a third time, as, as, there's certain times where if the motion, if the person putting the motion in, because he's trying to sell it, or she's trying to sell it, and I have no problems that way. But, okay, anyhow, go ahead.
Yeah, well, Council Long.
Well, I'm glad this has been pointed out, actually, because I don't think we came to a full conclusion. We might have come to a conclusion on the third speaking and all of that. I do recall that conversation, but I certainly don't recall that we were going to make this change. So I think this maybe is good, that we leave it the way it is for now. And I think council needs to, you know, we can remind ourselves that this was a process that's going to take some time, and we weren't in a hurry. So I think certainly taking it out is appropriate. Whether we reconsider it and change it and put it back in will depend upon the discussions from here out. But I don't feel comfortable about changing it from 10 to five, even though, as you say, your worship, we've never done that. But that has been the time allotted forever. So to make that change now doesn't seem appropriate. So I support taking it out and having a further discussion on the next round, and then we'll see what happens then. I don't see a downside to that at all.
Thank you. Council Woodward.
Yeah, I'm just going to clarify. So I think if Council Long and I are agreeing, it's like a hallelujah moment, and how do we possibly not proceed?
Less than 10 minutes.
Less than 10 minutes. The intent was never, in regional discussion, was not to give an advantage to the mover of the motion. But at the moment, when you have a notice of motion that has some complexity to it, there has been a couple of issues here so far where the mover is required to explain the motion, and then other people have two opportunities to debate it, and the mover only has one. As a potential compromise, there was a number of issues floated around in combination with this amendment, not with this amendment in isolation. So to simply arbitrarily reduce the speaking time with two opportunities of five minutes actually makes the problem that I just identified slightly worse. And while I applaud, you know, maybe taking some time away from Council Long on odd occasion, I'm also doing that to everyone, including myself, and feel that a more balanced approach to look at this again more completely with the totality of some of those issues rather than this amendment, I would appreciate pulling it out. But again, will of council, it's fine, either way.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I kind of recall the conversation on this topic, and I think we discussed that the 10 minutes was probably quite lengthy. And to give someone two opportunities at 10 minutes each seemed a very long time that I don't remember in my time in council anyone ever using. So I did like the idea of going to five minutes, but I'm comfortable with us removing this for the time and bringing it back for a discussion later, leaving it right now at two times 10 minutes. I do understand the value of the third conversation piece, but even three times five might seem a bit excessive. So I'm happy to remove it, and I'll support this amendment in this case for us to discuss it more fully later.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So on the amendment. And the motion carries, Council Richter, Mayor Philows opposed. Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Council Ferguson.
Yeah, I did want to thank staff as well, and the members of council that spent the time to go over the procedure bylaw. I know there was a lot of passion, and we looked at a lot of particular items on it, including the last one that's just discussed. I think that, as Council Richter has indicated, it's only one phase of the whole particular bylaw, but I did want to thank staff and members of council that spent a lot of time on this. It was a worthwhile process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no further discussions. I'll call a question on the main motion as amended. And it carries unanimously. Move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading. H1 is rezoning application number 100545. Development permit application number 101026.
Worship, there was G3?
Oh, G3, did I miss? Oh, there it is, right on top. My hand is over it. Okay, we'll go back to G3. Highway closure, dedication, removal, and disposal township. It's bylaw 5525. Could I have a motion, please? Council Whitmarsh, secondor. Council Kuntz, any discussion on G3? Seeing none, I'll call a question on G3. It carries, Council Richter, Council Arneson opposed. Now we move to bylaws for consideration at third reading. In H1, rezoning application 100545. Development permit application 101026. And development variance permit application number 100112. Bylaw 5480. And bylaw 5505 is qualico developments. Could I have a motion, please? Council Long, and a secondor, have a second. Council Kuntz, discussion on H1. Seeing none, I'll call a question. And it carries with Council Richter, Council Arneson opposed. And we move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading and for final adoption. We have I1, rezoning application number 100583. Bylaw 5510, this is Valero Brands Incorporated. Could I have a motion, please? Council Arneson, secondor. Council Ferguson, discussion on I1. Seeing none, I'll call a question. And it carries unanimously. And move on to I2 for third and final reading. Slow carbon mobility plan, electric vehicles, bylaw 5396. Could I have a motion, please? Council Arneson, second by Council Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on I2. And it carries unanimously. And move on to bylaws for final adoption. Bylaw, or sorry, J1 is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100097. Reno Investments, bylaw 5280 and 5281. We'll deal with the development permit separately. So a motion, please, on this one. Council Whitmarsh, secondor. Council Ferguson, and Council Richter.
Yeah, this one has been a while before, since it's been in front of us. I didn't like it then because of the tandem parking, and I still don't like it because of the tandem parking, so I'll not be supporting it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on J1 on the bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call a question. It carries, Council Richter, Council Arneson opposed. Now I need a motion for the development permit, 100821. Could I have a motion? Council Ferguson, secondor, have a second. Council Whitmarsh, discussion on the development permit. Seeing none, I'll call a question on J1. It carries, Council Richter and Council Arneson opposed. We move on to J2 for final adoption. This is rezoning application number 100507. And bylaw 5421, Essence Properties Incorporated. Could I have a motion, please? Council Long, secondor. Come on, second. Council Davis, thank you. Discussion, seeing none, I'll call a question on J2. And it carries with Council Arneson opposed. Need a motion for development permit application number 100950. Could I have a motion, please? Council, sorry, does Council Long moved it, or Davis? Council Davis moved it and seconded, secondor? Yeah, second. Council Ferguson, discussion, seeing none. Call a question on the development permit for J2. And it carries with Council Arneson opposed. There we go. Now we're up to the mayor's report. I'm glad you all stuck around. Good evening, everyone. Welcome here. There are a few events over the past couple of weeks, starting with groundbreaking and ribbon-cutting for Latimer Heights on Thursday, October the 24th. The first of its kind in Langley. This British-style, transit-oriented development will be pedestrian and eco-friendly and will boast 2,000 homes, retail and office space, and a hotel. On, also on October 24th, Councilors Arneson, Kuntz, and I attended tour of the Little Campbell River watershed hosted by the Little Campbell Watershed Society. We explored this beautiful watershed and discussed concerns around the sensitive part of the township's ecosystem. Really great day outside, looking at all the features of that watershed. That evening, the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce held its 23rd Annual Business Excellence Awards, which Council Ferguson and Council Kuntz also attended, along with me. Eleven businesses, business people, and nonprofit organizations were recognized for outstanding innovation, growth, ethics, customer service, and contributions to the community. And I'd like to point out that Lilian Kazakow, of Notary Corporation, won the George Preston Memorial Businessperson of the Year. Congratulations to him, and congratulations to all of the recipients of these awards, and to all the nominees. There's a lot of nominees, there's great businesses. I don't think, I don't think receiving one, there's so many good people there that do so much for our community. On Saturday, October 26th, was a semi-annual council of councils meeting. Councils Arneson, Ferguson, Richter, Long, Kuntz, Woodward, and I all attended. And this is a meeting of Metro Vancouver, bringing all member councillors together, councils together. Discussion topics include the draft 2020 budget overview, air quality and climate change, regional transportation plan, regional parks, housing, and regional economic prosperity. Also on Saturday, October 26th, Council Arneson and Council Long and I attended the Dewali celebrations in the Muriel-Arneson Library, where some great dancing was observed by me of a couple of our councillors. It was wonderful to see so many people and experience the diversity of culture through crafts, face painting, music, and dance, and the refreshments are truly delicious. It was a great time, and I really appreciate the library for doing this and Sirens for putting this on every year. Wednesday and Thursday, October 30th and 31st, was the annual, the Ninth Annual Zero Waste Conference hosted by Metro Vancouver. It was in Vancouver. Council Ferguson, Council Kuntz, Council Long, and I attended the two-day event. The theme centered on a future without waste and mobilizing success in a circular economy. Next year is the 10th Annual Zero Waste Conference, and looking forward to it, will be held in Vancouver also. A lot of great speakers, probably one of the best conferences for, on this topic, I think, anywhere. They really had some top-notch speakers from all over North America and Europe. It was really great. On Friday, November 1st, was the annual 4-H banquet and awards held at the Fort Langley Evangelical Free Church in Fort Langley. Dozens of scholarships and ribbons were awarded for public speaking, project achievements at the PNE, and other milestones. Glen Valley 4-H member Emma Davidson received multiple prizes, including the BC Hydro Award, the Auto Co-op Scholarship, and the Senior High Aggregate Award for being the top-scoring member of the district. And there she is, holding the Langley Award, which is provided jointly by the city and the township of Langley. Congratulations to Emma and all the young people in 4-H who have a passion for agriculture. On Saturday, November 2nd, was the 12th Annual Langley Animal Protection Society's Furry Tail Endings Gala, where $156,000 was raised to help our furry friends. Great event, a lot of fun, and just good to see that kind of money going towards laps. Upcoming events, Climate Action Event is going to be held tomorrow, November 5th, right here. Skytrain Open House, Thursday, November 7th, is a new round of public engagement on the proposed Surrey-Langley Skytrain project. The stage of engagement provides the public with new details, including the location of the proposed Skytrain guideway along Fraser Highway. And there'll be more information on the website. Remembrance Day ceremonies in Fort Langley, Aldergrove, Muriel, and Langley City will be on November the 11th, 2019. I'd just like to read something. It's, "It is so important that we continue to remember our veterans, those who served and made incredible sacrifices, so that we may continue to enjoy our freedoms, the way of life we value so much for our families and ourselves." And I certainly would encourage all of you to attend one of the four ceremonies in the two Langleys. It's really good to see, and it's great to see how these ceremonies have increased in size and numbers over the last several years. Attended some meetings over the last little while. October 23rd is the TransLink Board Strategy Session, and 25th was the TransLink Mayor's Council. Metro Vancouver Council Councils, we mentioned, on October 26th, and Metro Board Meeting was on November the 1st. And other members of council also were busy out attending all kinds of board metro meetings. Fraser Valley Regional District, or sorry, Fraser Valley Regional Library, October 23rd, by Council Arneson. by Council Anderson, and Council Steve Ferguson attended the Metro Board Workshop on my behalf. Thank you. So does council have anything to add? Council Ferguson?
Oh, yeah, our Rotary Club held our Wine Fest at the Willowbrook Mall on, on Saturday. Didn't get a chance to get the pitcher and all the, a bunch of people drinking wine, but by the same token, it's a Rotary event, and all the money raised, it goes to charity. And its charity of choice this year is Langley Memorial Hospital, and as we all know, the Rotary supports other groups and organizations within the community, and they don't use money for things like administration, 100% of the money goes towards helping those funds. So I'd bring that to our attention, and second thing, oh, it's under GBRD, so I'll wait for that.
You can, you can do it now. Let's do it now.
Okay. So basically, under, well, we're working on a lot of things with Metro Vancouver, and you know, there's going to be, as you know, Mr. Mayor, changes as far as fees and charges and water, liquid waste, the community is, is growing, and we'll be seeing that over the next little while as to the impact. But as we're talking about this, as we all know, that there's a proposed strike coming for Skytrain, or I guess the, the metro transit system. Coast Mountain and other things, Seabus, and I, you know, the concern is out there, and I was wondering, Mr. Mayor, as vice chair, I know the chair was on today, whether you've got anything to report on that.
Basically, it's all been in the, in the media, the Coast Mountain Bus Company is under, they're going through negotiations or talks with the union regarding their contract, and right now, it's, it's, looks like there's some job action happening. Still, as far as I know, and I listened to Mayor Kotay's, Mayor Kotay was on NW today and also had a statement, and the reason Mayor's Council got involved is because there's been talk about, well, maybe the Mayor's Vision should be put on hold or use some of that money to fund this, so I think that caused Mayor Kotay to, to make a few statements that we do support the employees, we also support our Mayor's Vision, we want to see that go, and hoping that they'll all come back to the table.
And the concern, I guess I had, is that Mayor Kotay had indicated, who's a chair of the, of the board, the Translink Board, and had indicated that it's important that the citizen be aware that there's an impact if there's too much movement one way or another on the amount of delivery of services, and future delivery of services for buses, drivers, maintenance, and everything else. I didn't realize that, that seemed quite substantial.
Yeah, the, the Mayor's Vision contemplated hiring, let me say, 1,300 new bus drivers, more, more bus service to ease congestion, to, really to help address some of the concerns that the union are voicing. And so, of course, if more is, and, and we did anticipate that there would be increases in wages, that was anticipated, it's just how much maybe it's not. So I think it's something that, that the, that the management of Coast Mountain Bus Company and the union have to work through, and we're just encouraging them to continue to work, but.
Yeah, they've got to get it back to the table.
As mayors, we don't want to give up on, on bringing in the much-needed transit services in our region.
Yeah, I think it's very important that they get back to the table and negotiate. I hope I haven't used my five minutes yet.
You have.
We still have ten.
Okay, thank you.
My last point is, as we all know, that the, the Translink is going through a consultation process, and I know that, you know, something that we did discuss with them very, very briefly, and I don't know if the township wants to take a position, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there, is the fact that the current budget is going to bring the Skytrain to somewhere around Fleetwood. I used to call it at the rinks there, where my kids used to play hockey, and that's in Fleetwood. And I was saying, thinking that that'd be phase one, but phase two would be maybe to the Willowbrook Mall, where phase three would be the city. And I think that would certainly be an idea that makes a lot of sense for funding, future funding, and also getting, getting the idea, and rather than going, the second phase going all the way to Langley City. So that's just a suggestion that I had, and I don't know if you could bring it to the Mayor's Council, or whether we need to do it individually, but something I thought that had some merit.
Definitely, it's, it's going to go as far as the funding will permit, that's authorized, and that's Fleetwood right now. And if more funding comes available, if we can get it to, you know, even, even to, you know, wherever we can get it to, I think that would happen, but that funding has to come, so that's phase three funding that we don't have yet from the levels of government. Yeah, but that's good, yeah, I appreciate that, thanks. Council Kuntz?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate our local Langley Rams, our junior football team here in Langley. They won the Colin Cup this past weekend, and we'd like to invite all of Langley out to support them in two weeks as they host the Canadian Bowl. So that'll be 1:00 PM on November 16th, so.
Is that McLaren?
Yes.
Yep, and Plains Saskatchewan.
Yes.
Yeah, the Plains Saskatchewan, so it's our turn to beat them.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. Council Richter?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up a little bit with a comment on Metro. Metro did approve their 2020 budget on Friday, along with the five-year financial plan, and the overall household impact is going to be going up. The tax increase for this year for Metro Services will be an additional 6.4%, and there are bigger increases projected for the future years, although each year goes through its own separate budget process. So I just wanted the public to be aware that they will be having increased taxes for Metro Vancouver next year.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to add, there's some pretty bold moves this time, an extra, no, I forget the exact percentage, but it works out to $4 per household for an average house to go into housing, to assist with more housing, and also another $4 per household going into parks acquisition. As we all know, our growing communities, there are sensitive parkland areas that are disappearing, and Metro Vancouver, you know, made the, made the decision, our decision, to increase that fund so we could purchase more parkland, which would be then held in perpetuity for future generations. So, so this year did add a bit of an increase that normally wouldn't happen, but Metro Vancouver Board of Directors felt that those items were important, and do appreciate all the support. But Council Richter is correct, there's certainly increased costs in our water services, our liquid waste services, some very large capital projects that, some of them are legislated by other levels of government, that we need to increase the, you know, the, especially liquid waste, and making sure that the water flow that goes out is, it meets a higher standard, and that's costing some big dollars, big capital projects, which is impacting all of us. But thank you for that, Council Richter. Okay, so we'll move on, and next item is other business. Is there any other business? Council Anderson.
Thank you, Worship. I'm really looking forward to all the minutes I'm going to have next meeting. I have two notices of motion, that was a little joke. The first one is a biodiversity strategy for the Township of Langley, so that's notice number one, and the second one is an affordable housing service agreements for rental accommodations in the Township of Langley.
Thank you. Is there any other business? Seeing none, a motion to terminate by Council Davis, there's a, a seconder to the termination. All the hands go up. Council Kuntz, all those in favor, opposed, carried, thank you. Well, I'll take a minute and transition over to the public here.